Welcome to the Berlin Select Board Open Meeting. Today is Monday, August 26th. We are opening at 6:37. This is an open session, public meetings. They are subject to being recorded. Your image and voice will be recorded. All right, call to order 6:37. Let's chug through this. First up, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 12th open session minutes.
Seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
All right.
Excellent.
General public comment? Because I'll make you sign a piece of paper if you have to have a general public comment. All right, we're seeing none, moving on. Can we jiggle the hearings and appointments just to move him up so he can leave?
If he'd like to leave.
Mr. Shatner. Police Chief Eric Shatner.
He wore a special shirt.
Extraordinary, he did.
He got dressed for the occasion.
Yeah, but is he wearing socks?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're getting personal now.
All right, so for those wondering what we just did, I moved up the notice of intent to conditionally appoint Patrick May as a full-time police officer. Take it away, Mr. Shatner.
So, we held interviews a couple of months ago and there was two officers, two residents that interviewed him. We, they turned over the top three candidates, he was one of them. And, you know, can't say enough about him. Bachelor's degree in criminology from Assumption University. He's currently in the Police Academy now. Due to graduate December 13th. And the only thing we have to do, he has a physical that's less than six months old, so that counts. We just have to set him for a psychological exam. And we can get him representing Berlin.
Wow, so he can be on the road super duper beginning of the year?
Oh, uh, December 13th, he gets out, so 14th, 15th, 16th, he'll start field training. And it's 480 hours of field training.
Nice.
So, we're probably looking mid-February, early March to have him on the road by himself.
Fabulous. Thank you. Well done, and well done to whoever was on the committee. Appreciate your time. Do you have any questions, Mr. Shatner?
You told me he was a graduate of Tohoto.
Yep.
I believe I may have been on a committee with his father, possibly. Was his father a selectman?
I believe so.
Yes, that's where I know the name. Uh, we were, we were on a hiring committee, probably for a superintendent.
Yeah, I was at Tohoto today and spoke with a few of the administrative staff and they loved him.
That's awesome. Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions down the end of the table? Got any? All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve Patrick May as a full-time police officer.
I will second that. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Well, when he is here, please bring him.
Yeah, we will.
So that we can say hi.
Absolutely.
And the town thanks you. People of the town thank you. Awesome.
All right, sounds good.
All right, so swinging back to the agenda. I'm looking. I don't see our Highway Department, so we're going to be skippy-doing over that. Next up is consideration of an application submitted by Grazia?
Grazie Sures.
Of Hey Kiddos for an automatic amusement device license to be utilized at the Solomon Pond Mall. Kristin, Dee?
We do have someone in the audience representing.
Welcome. Any questions? Everything in line? No issues, concerns, feedback? Nothing?
No, this is a new business at Solomon Pond Mall that Richard Hanks was inspecting and realized they had an automatic amusements, so he sent him over to us.
Nice, 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 nice. Glad to see that the mall is coming back to life. Any questions for you, from you?
I believe I met you at the last round of grand opening? Were you at the last, you and your wife perhaps? No? Okay.
I have a body double that he was.
Oh, okay. That's who was.
Smart.
Nice, very smart. You lobbed them out.
I took a little video on my phone if you wanted to see the setup and the games, et cetera.
Well, I mean, we would, but unfortunately, the people can't see it. So, when is the grand opening? I know I got an email.
It's like Wednesday, isn't it?
Fortunately, I won't be able to make it.
I, I'm hoping to come.
It's very nice, they figure for younger kids. And, um, I mean, it just looks fabulous.
Great.
Yeah. Our, our piece is just the arcade. That's just a tiny section. I mean, it's, you know, it's educational, it's, it's very nice.
Perfect. So, for those who may not have heard it, it's an educational spot going in the mall. We're going to have lots of games and bring your kids, come on down. How was that? All right? So, do I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I will second it. Any questions? Don't, not hearing any? For, for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. All right. Next up on the agenda is a consideration of a special event application submitted by Liz Kelly on behalf of the Solomon Pond, Solomon Pond Mall to hold an event on September 11th, 2024. Questions?
Everything's in order?
Everything in line?
Everything is in order, yes.
Okay.
All right, I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I will second that. Any other questions?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the special event application for September 11th over at the mall, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Chugging, chugging. We may do this in record time, kids, just saying. All right, Kristin? You're up. TA report.
First, under the TA report, Peg and I discussed changing the dates of the next two Select Board meetings. So, they will be September 16th and September 30th. And that is largely due to the fact that I am away next week. So, that leads into my second point, that on Tuesday, we will need Select Board members to come in and sign the warrants, please. And June will send you an email when they are ready to sign. We need at least two signatures on those warrants. It looks like it's probably just going to be the payroll warrant because of the holiday. The payables one will probably be done later on this week and I'll be able to sign that one.
So, would that be Tuesday? Okay. And I don't know if Scott will be back by then or not, so it might have to be both of us.
As long as there's two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and Peg and Grazie talked about the new Hey Kiddos. It's actually a 26,000 square foot plus indoor playground, the entire thing. His is just the smaller arcade section. They will be having their grand opening Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. And all Select Board members are invited. If you do plan to attend and have not already RSVP'd with Dee, please do so by tomorrow morning. I'm pleased to report that leave accruals for town employees have been reconciled and appear on employee paychecks now or in the online Public Safety Employee Payroll System, which gives live moment-to-moment updates, which is great. And in fact, we'd like to potentially move toward that on the town side, if possible, because that would eliminate the need for paper paycheck stuffs. So, many, many, many thanks to Kathy, June, Amy, Sergio, Dee. Everyone has been helping out Treasure Collector and Accounting Offices for what is an exhaustive amount of effort reconciling and implementing this process. It took a lot of time, so just want to say thank you to everybody involved. On the radio project, the radio antenna installation continues with work at Taylor Road completed and work at the Coburn site underway. Repeaters are on order for Phase Two, and I am working on still finalizing the paperwork for Phase Three, the $400,000 in funding for the funding that Lori Trahan was able to secure for us. We held our second meeting with Architect Dennis Ingram of Contact Studios regarding the final design for the second floor renovation project at Public Safety. And just as a reminder, we do need to appropriate additional funding for this project from mitigation funds at the December town meeting in order to complete the project. South Street Bridge. Mass DOT is experiencing some heavy delays with regard to state-funded, state-funded bridge projects at this time, so we are going to be seeking, and we have been told this will not be an issue, an extension to the town's grant. And we're working closely with our engineering firm, VHB, to move the project along. Unfortunately, we have to wait for final approval still from Mass DOT before moving forward with the bridge work, so this looks like it's becoming a summer 2025 project, which I know no one wants to hear. But unfortunately, we are at the mercy of the approvals from the state. I have reached out to both Senator Kennedy and Representative Killcoin's offices to ask for their assistance in reaching out to DOT. And Rep. Killcoin's office said they were going to run point on this, so once I have more information, I will get it out to everybody. Stormwater, stormwater compliance. We are currently confirming that Berlin is in compliance with the Mass DEP's stormwater pollution regulations, including what is known as an MS4 permit from the EPA or the Environmental Protection Agency. For those of you who are not familiar with stormwater, it's basically the runoff that ends up down in storm drains and ends up in waterways that we rely upon for drinking, recreation, et cetera. So, cities and towns in Mass and actually around the nation have to develop stormwater management programs, and those programs detail the activities and measures that will be implemented to meet the terms of the federal permit. It involves public education, comments for the, the public, an opportunity to provide comments. We have to control construction site stormwater discharge and anything on basically any types of development projects and municipal properties. So, the town received a waiver from these requirements in 2003, rather, given our population size, land size, and the limited amount of wa- waterways that were recognized under this permit, but we need to confirm more recent compliance. So, I'm going to be speaking to a consulting firm who specializes in stormwater management later on this week. Because of that, I would like to reserve the remaining ARPA funding at this time in case it is needed to bring the town up to date, because Mass DEP is starting to fine communities that are out of compliance. And they're hefty fines, and I-
When do you think you'd know whether we're out of compliance?
Well, I don't want to exactly call Mass DEP and say, hey, are we in compliance?
No.
But basically, we have the letter from 2003, so I'm going to speak to the consulting firm, their name is Teta and Howard, later on this week. I've worked with them before, they're, they're fantastic, and they are going to take a look at where we're at and meet the needs. We are an area that is covered and listed on the EPA's website as having a, as being impacted by stormwater, and they show all the communities in Massachusetts and all of their stormwater plans are up there, but we don't have one. So, I need to look into this. And it's possible that between changes in administrations at Highway and here, and the fact that we really never had a true DPW or a town administrator, this is one of those weird things that kind of doesn't fall on any one particular person, and so it's possible that it may have slipped through the cracks a little bit. So, I will hopefully, by the next meeting, have an answer for you.
In, in June, you don't remember anything about it?
It's a, it's an odd one.
Yeah.
But, and, and I think we're not the only small community that it's sort of slipped through the cracks, but it did start around 2000, so since it's been 25 years, the state is starting to find people that are not in compliance. So, we just need to make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's. And typically, the way towns do this is it's actually an annual article on town meeting used to fund these services, because you have to do a community outreach program, which I looked on the website and I haven't seen any. It's, it's flyers, it's things about how to wash, you know, don't wash your car, take it to a car wash, because it's better for the environment, cleaning up pet waste, com- you know, how to deal with composting, different things like that. I didn't see any of that, but it's entirely possible we're still covered under this waiver, and I just want to make sure. So, we have grown in our size. The last time we had the waiver, we were under 1,000 people that were impacted directly in the zones that were covered by the permit. So, now it's more. So, that's what I, I want to confirm. And I can tell you, obviously, you know, my previous community being three times larger, we still, we allocated about $25,000 a year for stormwater compliance. It's really a big deal, because there has to be monitoring, testing, plans put in place, outreach, it's, it's kind of a big deal. So, I want to make sure that we're, we're all set with that. The position of building maintenance operator has now been posted, and we've started to get a few applicants in. And we're also working on posting the part-time recreation director and retooling the COA director position, hoping to bring that back to the Personnel Committee in early September. We submitted the $50,000 grant for the part-time energy manager to assist the town with preparing for applying for the climate leader status and energy efficient building improvements, amongst others. Also, looking into the playground itself, Commons reviewed some draft plans there and met with the 1870 Committee Chair to discuss the committee's initial meetings and plans. And I think that I've talked enough.
I have a couple of questions. One, Eric, you can probably help since Fred is not here. There has been considerable chatter on one of the non-official pages, wondering where the construction exactly will be on Lyman Road and if it will cause issues to get up. People are concerned about buses, people have private businesses in their house, so is there any light that you can shed on where on Lyman it's going to be? Kristin, do you?
I do not.
Is this for the what?
Uh, they're putting in some drains.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they'll, they'll keep at least one lane open.
Lyman has a lane?
Has more than one?
Okay. All right. I just didn't know.
Yeah, we, I'll talk to Fred and see if we can get that information.
Okay. And then the other one is for the both of you on the, the build-out of the Public Safety. Do you have any date-ish in mind when whomever is doing this will need to put materials up on the floor? And the reason why I ask is that there are currently items that we are housing, that we should not be housing, that I don't think we are under any obligation to be housing, that need to be moved in order to chugga-chugga along with the build-out. So, we're just trying to get an idea on ish?
Yeah, I thought, I thought I'd say November, December.
Of next year? Of this year?
Of this year.
So, then that needs to move and move quick?
Yep. So, I will contact the owners of those items and tell them they need to be relocated now.
And we are not, there he is, and we are not, are we under any obligation to house any of that material?
No.
Could you make that very clear in the letter?
Yes.
And then please, I'm going to assume, need the assistance of maybe Highway to move that unless there are volunteers who are willing to do it by a certain date? And can you be very specific that if it's in there and it's not moved out, when the material needs to come up, it's going to go?
Absolutely.
Fred! I like your t-shirt.
You want to do one?
An Iron Man?
No, Spartan.
You want me to die? No! Come on up. Well, wait a minute, wait there. Wait. Do you have any other questions for Kristin?
No.
Okay. I have one more. Two, actually. You mentioned you spoke with Evy. When are they coming to the board to give us an update on what's going on?
So, they've had one meeting so far. They're having another meeting this week, I believe. They are looking at actually the facility study, which I thought was a great place to start, given the fact that Capitol will be going out in September for FY '26. I don't have a date from them yet to come back to the board. They're really just forming at this point and, you know, they haven't taken any specific action at this time, but it sounds like they're ready to start moving with the, some suggestions and recommendations on building improvements, website. And I've asked them also to propose and work with Sandra on the fee structure and updating the contract, because you and I had started talking about that back, I think, in February, and then that got tabled for a little bit. So, we've kind of talked about those things, and then I will reconnect with them once those are underway.
Yeah, I know that they're planning on-
Yeah, they said they would come back again.
Yes. I know Evy had mentioned, Evy and Mary Reddington had reached out that they would like to go to CPA, so that's why I sent them the facilities. And suggested to them that if it's not on their item, maybe they had the stairs for CPA money.
And they are talking about the stairs for CPA, and then I believe Evy spoke a little bit to Fred about looking at some of the other items in the-
On the list?
List and communicating with Fred and kind of having Fred help prioritize what might be the best things to do first or apply for under Capitol.
Actually, not yet.
Not yet?
I did get a text from her, it's that I asked her to call her, but I-
Yeah, no, she will be, I think she, yeah, when, when I met with her last week, she's going to reach out.
So, now you know why she's going to call you.
Yeah. Now you know.
All right. And then my-
When do you want them to come back? Can I just interrupt you for a second? Like, how soon? Because I, I, we can get that on the books.
Once they have, you know, the plan that they are going to have, that's probably soon enough. I mean-
I, well, considering-
Before they start the plan.
Right, considering we're not going to meet again until the 16th, so that gives them a couple of weeks. So, if they're ready, then the 16th they can come by, and if not, then definitely by the 30th. They've had more than enough time to storm in and norm in and form in to get this thing going.
And you're just looking for kind of what I was just mentioning?
Yeah.
Like, what their plan is going forward?
Yeah, what their plan is, what they, how they plan on, if they have any advertising items. I know there's still concern among residents that if Chris needs the hall, but Peg's coming in with a giant, you know, production of a dance, then Chris gets booted because I'm bringing in more money.
We're not doing booting anymore. We had that conversation. Because that is really one of the things that we and they feel is detrimental to people wanting to book the facility.
Yes.
So, we had that conversation and, because I was specifically asked and my, I made a, I made an executive decision that we're not booting people anymore. If possible, if there's a conflict and you have two people on the same day, could one use downstairs, one use upstairs? But you've got events that people have scheduled, they've scheduled speakers or, you know, entertainers, and people have marked that on their calendar. It's not right just because they're not paying to bump them.
Or at least they've done it in the proper way.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. And my last question, my least favorite. You mentioned you're continuing to work, working to implement the fourth modification. Why is it being delayed and what is going on? And why can't we just move forward?
So, that is a little bit later on the agenda.
All righty.
If that's okay to wait till then.
I can wait till then.
Okay.
All right. Well, Mr. Fred, now that you're here, do you want to come up and do your report?
Was I supposed to give it earlier?
No, no, I have been buzzing through this, so you're good.
She's moving fast.
And actually, I have a question. That I asked Chief Shatner and Kristin, I know that you're starting tomorrow on Lyman for all the stuff.
We were supposed to start today.
Oh, I thought it was tomorrow. Oh, today is the 26th. Well, I figured you were up on the roof because of the pending rain and needed to get that up.
We were, we were up there in the rain as the thunder passed. But it's covered.
Where on Lyman? Because there's been chatter about, can I get to my house? Will the school buses get up here? I have businesses.
I did respond to the one that you had forwarded this morning.
Oh, okay.
And I talked with two other residents on the phone.
All right.
Are the ones that have reached out.
Okay.
So, it's starting right at the intersection and going up the top of the hill, just, just at the corner where the guard rail is.
Yep.
Because ultimately, we want to tie into that basin as well.
So, I'm being impacted?
You are. And actually-
You're one of the people who's a resident.
No, I figured I was down the end, that I didn't care. I don't care.
Yeah, so it's just over 900 feet, six structures. And, and I, like I told all the other people, the only time the road's going to be closed is if we have to do a cross drain. And when it is closed, it's going to be maybe five hours, not even a full day.
Okay.
And we do have the steel plates loaded, we'll have it up there. So, if for some reason emergency personnel have to get through with school buses, we can deploy that over the triage and people can get in and out.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the bus go up this morning, I think at quarter past seven.
Yeah. So, yeah, tis the season.
Nice. So, I won't be able to get out.
Would it have been, because I don't think school starts with the kids till Wednesday.
Yeah, so I don't know if it was like a test run or something. Because I thought it was odd, because last year it was quarter of seven, quarter of eight, but it went up at quarter past seven this morning, and I'm like, ooh, different bus route.
Was it North Berlin?
No, it was Berlin Bus.
Oh.
Yeah, they're probably trying to figure their times.
Oh, they might be just doing the bus route for the bus driver.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we impacted the end of the school season with paving, so now we're going to impact the beginning of the school season, which I-
Keep it consistent.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, well, I'll see you tomorrow outside. I'll come visit.
Yeah, we'll be there.
All right. If you want to give us your update, that would be awesome.
Well, sure. So, we get a lot done, it doesn't look like it, according to the paper. But the PTO project is completely done. We finally got the sill fence, wattle, everything picked up, so we're, we're totally done up here now. But I got to give kudos to the guys, because like, we pushed through, that was in July, and, you know, we had the hot, humid days, and, I mean, they, they pushed through it and we were able to get it done. At a slower pace, but we, it, it got done, so, I mean, kudos to them. And then, of course, with all the rain we have, we had to deal with a washout that was on Lower Pleasant Street. We ended up doing over 200 feet of burn to keep the guys' stone wall from washing out, which really wasn't part of our whole big project. But that, that got done. He was very happy with it. And then, we ended up going up to Pito Road, not Pito, Allen Road, because in the past, there was a, there was a drain that was always in someone's front yard. We looked in it, because the previous owners never did anything with that side of their yard. The new owners took over, and obviously, now they want to use our property. So, our basin was dumping all of their water in their yard, basically covering over their well casing by a couple of feet. He actually approached me about that the end of last year, and just time-wise, we weren't able to get to it. So, we finally got to it, and that's, that's where we did 213 feet of pipe. We put a structure where it dumped on his property, brought it up the street, because I looked into it, there was no drainage. Matter of fact, there's only two drainage movements in town recorded. I did talk to Denny about it, and I guess there were a whole bunch put in place way back in the day, but no one ever followed through. So, I don't know if there's a way to get that going again. But that took care of that problem, and he was more than grateful, because like I said, it was just dumping everything in his yard. So, from there is when we went down to Pleasant Street shortly after to take care of that water problem down there. And then we started with the roadside mower again. The mower did break down, it was operator error that took out a relief valve on the front of the mower, so that, that took it down for about two weeks. Got it up and running, it went down again because a solenoid, electric solenoid for the mower head itself wasn't playing right. So, that got fixed, and now it's back up and running. It's been out on the road. In the meantime, we took the time to actually go out and clear the guard rails and get it ready for the machine when it was done. But now that we're starting the pipe job, the mower's put on hold, unless we can get to the point where we can free a guy up and send him up the mower.
Hey, if you want to bring the mower up, since I can't get out, you know, and just like, let me drive down the road, I'd be happy to mow.
Hey, it was up in your neighborhood this morning, actually.
And, and kudos to your, and to your folks, I know that they're going around and clearing all the brush, but man, that nasty knot wood, you can't see coming around the corner, so I don't know who's come up twice, but thank you for doing that, cause that's a wing and a prayer to take that corner.
All this stuff's insane.
Yep.
Um, and actually, last year, Chris never really reached up over the wall.
To try and kill it?
Well, not so much that, but when I mowed up there, like, I'd reach out as far as I could on top of the wall. Um, you could see basically back to the pine trees, so when you're coming up, you can clear shot, like Sharon and Rich would be able to see almost down the corner.
Yeah.
When they get out, um, so they know whenever they're doing an intersection to try to open it up. But if it's in someone's front yard, don't attack stuff because no one wants to look at it. But they're getting better at it, um, the more they do. Uh, so the, the South Street Bridge, uh, we found out that, uh, everything's being held up in their hydraulic department, um, because they were backlogged with, I guess, so many projects. Somehow ours got lost or something, or shuffled down on the deck, I guess. Um, to the point where we have to file an extension to keep our grant going. Yeah, it's, and I did read your most recent response from.
And I was just, I had mentioned during my TA report before you came that, um, Rep Kilcoin's office was running point on that. They, they wrote me back and said they were gonna reach out to DOT, so maybe we'll get some traction there. Hopefully, some, uh, maybe an expedited, expedited time at this point, hopefully.
How long, how long was it, the, the other South Street Bridge, the one that did last? How long was that one out?
Uh, I honestly don't know.
I think it was, it had to be almost two years or something.
I think the longest one would have been on Lower Pleasant Street at Mill Pond, because I remember we had a mock accident down there one time. And, uh, that was the longest one, Jones Road wasn't even that long, I don't think. That's when Denny tried getting to go with the covered bridge.
Yeah, I'm talking about South Street near Walter's House, that, that one.
Yeah.
Oh, that little one, yeah.
That would have been way before.
But it was, I mean, there was no traffic on South Street. It still isn't that much.
Yeah.
Well, and it's frustrating, cause they like to close the bridge to remove the liability off the state, and then they tell the town, if you don't close the bridge, now the liability's on you, so obviously, we don't want that.
You have no choice.
Correct, and then, of course, we have to wait for them to approve all of those plans and the projects, so we're really, you know, it's great to get a grant, but we are really at their mercy.
Yeah.
So that begs another question, um, though the bridge is closed and a car can't get over it.
Right.
Is it still open and okay for pedestrians, animals to walk it?
For traffic.
Okay, so for traffic is okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, they can get over it, they just didn't want weighted vehicles on it, um, because actually, the day I was down there with, with the senior engineer, we're sitting on the guardrail talking, here comes a ten-wheeler. It's like, um, you just passed two signs that said you can't cross the bridge, and they just fly right over. It's like, this is not helping. In order for us to keep it open, we were supposed to double plate it, you know, crisscross it, and then hot top over it all, um, that would have been over twenty thousand dollars for the plates. And they would still come out every month to inspect it, and if two months down the road, they failed it.
Shut it down.
We have twenty thousand dollars worth of steel plates that, that we now own, and the bridge is still closed, which is why we took the opportunity then to just close it. But yeah, anyone can still walk down it, things like that, they just don't want vehicle traffic.
Okay.
So, yeah, hopefully, um, so we totally missed the, uh, the timeframe that I originally posted, it was only supposed to be eight months.
Right.
Um, and the cost just keeps going up, so the longer it takes, the more and more this is costing.
We'll need two grants.
Yeah, well, I'm sweating, honestly, because like, the construction grant's only up to five hundred if, if they give it to you. Our chapter ninety is dwindling because we're actually paving, so it's like, oh my god, oh my god, oh my god. There'll be some more people upset because, you know, we didn't do their road because we have to save money for that bridge. And that doesn't even account for all our other bridges that need work done, maintenance work.
We, we do have a, a town meeting coming up possibly in December.
Correct.
Well, and Representative Kilcoin and Senator Kennedy will be down at nineteen Kada next month, so it might be an opportunity to ask them publicly what they're doing to assist. Just saying.
Perfect.
I, I might have told them that that could potentially be a hot button issue when they're in town.
Well, actually, I just got an email today, um, from, God, I forget who. Um, actually, look, and they're gonna be sending a survey out for chapter ninety, because the last one they did, uh, I was a hundred percent honest saying, you know, the little cities and towns aren't getting what we need to actually keep up with our stuff, um, and then, you know, that was last year. Well, the one they're sending out now is because there were so many communities saying, you know, we need more money.
Right.
The, the cost of everything has gone up, you can't go anywhere, uh, so hopefully, something comes from that.
Yeah, and Goby, who is the, uh, Governor's Director of Rural Affairs, holds like a weekly half hour call that I try to get on whenever I can, and one of the things she talked about is more chapter ninety for rural areas, so that's made it to her, and she's advocating for it, so we'll see where it goes from there.
I think at some point, the state should actually, like, the bigger cities, Newton, Wellesley, all them, like, they have millions, they get millions. They'll, they'll get a million dollars this year, they'll get one next year, and they sit on it. It's like, if they're not using it, take their proportion, split it up to the people that need it. That, that'd be unfair. And the interdepartment stuff, uh, was just basically down the transfer station, so when we started, um, the drainage job that we were gonna do behind the compacted wall and everything, um, we had to stop because of so much groundwater. Uh, we never got back to it, so that's where the water was running off, so it started on rodent. Um, standard answer, we'd come down, fill it in, so they could actually start putting the white goods up there instead of putting them down below, because we move them in and crush them and all that, so that got done, uh, amongst just the regular stuff we do for them. That, that was basically about it, that's, that's, uh, that's July and a half, hundred and thirty-one days as of the day I submitted this.
No, it's, no, it's not gonna happen.
It's coming, leaves are falling.
No, it's not, no, uh-huh, not happening.
She's having too much fun in the summer.
I am.
Yeah.
So, my favorite annoying question, um, weather stripping for the town barn.
Yep, it's still in the works, um, I understand I have till October fifteenth, October twelfth, um, to actually have it, like, this is it. Um, I've reached out to Monster in Worcester, um, Sterling Overhead Door, and we were supposed to be getting one from Sterling, but haven't gotten it yet. Monster is like a phone tag, so I might give up on them because where it's under ten thousand, we don't need three.
You don't.
Or I can list it as, they never responded or something.
Yeah, you actually, under ten, it's called sound business practices, so as long as, you know, it's not someone, you know, charging you an exorbitant amount of money, it's a reasonable price.
Right.
You don't have to do that, you can go direct, um, and you don't have to do the three quotes.
Okay.
So I think that's probably at this point the best way to go.
Well, that's why I figured I'd at least try to get another, so we can compare it to what Worcester was gonna try.
And that's not a bad thing to do either, um, if it was a time issue or a time matter, you could move forward with just one, but it never hurts to check more than one and make sure that we're on par.
Right.
And someone's not trying to pull the wool over our eyes.
So that's-
So you mean when I won't have a conniption fit when I read the electric bills in, in the winter for the town barn? And like fall to the floor and flail?
It's gonna be snowing so much, we won't even be in this, we won't have the heat on.
No, we're not getting snow anymore, remember, we're in a tropical environment now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good one.
Yeah, it's gonna be busy, like, literally, there was a all-black woolly bear a week ago.
And I, and I suppose what, with all the squirrels eating all the pig nuts too, that they're like building, you know, their little homes for snacks? That was a couple of years ago with the amount of pine cones.
Yet, last year was horrible.
Yeah, last year was bad. I haven't seen that.
Um, Susan wants us to, to keep moving along, are there any other questions for, uh, Mr. Fred? Alright, what time you starting tomorrow?
Um, well, we can't make noise till seven.
Okay.
But the trucks are loaded, so we'll be there probably seven oh one.
Set your alarm for seven.
I won't need to set the alarm, because I hear I'm coming up the road, alright.
Oh yeah, we'll be banging.
Thank you, Mr. Fred, as always, pleasure to see you. Alright, down to old business, uh, building assessments.
I can provide a couple of updates if you'd like. Um, so I have reached out to, um, gentlemen who gave us the quote on the Brown Barn, to get a quote for the other two buildings and see if there was economies of scale and doing demo of all three. I do think we're gonna need to split off the Brown Barn though, if we wanna use ARPA money for it, but he's, um, working out a time, uh, for, with Fred to go over and meet, um, uh, meet him to look at the buildings, so that is underway. Um, I did today notify, just so if you and your phones start ringing, the Lions Club, the Historical Commission, and the, um,
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, that they need to move their stuff, um, and start thinking about it, and anything that can be moved now needs to be moved now because the board is considering possible demolition of those buildings. Um, I spoke with Rich Hanks about, um, the demolition delay waiver, and that does apply in pretty much any circumstance unless the building is imminently at risk of structural collapse. So if like it's leaning and like about to come down, you might be able to get a waiver to the demolition delay. Otherwise, we're going through that process. And so, and that cannot happen unfortunately until you have a licensed contractor on board because it has to be a licensed contractor who pulls the permit in our online permitting system, they actually have to upload their license. So we can't pull the permit out of the town.
Start to ask and say, look now.
Well, we did kind of, you know, we, I did go to a historical commission meeting, we talked about the Brown Barn, and of course, there's no guarantee, but they indicated that was not a building of particular interest. I suppose we could do the same with these two buildings, um, and I can find out when the next historical commission meeting is and at least put it on their radar.
And you're, you're talking about the old fire station and the rescue squad.
Yep.
Brutal.
So, yeah, I mean, have we decided that that's what we wanna do, or are there other options?
I think the way we left it last time was to get a quote and see how much it would cost.
Right.
Um, and to research the dem- demolition delay process, so I'm just, you know, reporting back part of that. Unfortunately, I don't have the quote yet, um, for the demo, but, um, I don't believe the board took a formal vote to actually demo the buildings yet.
I didn't think so, that's why I, I, I had thought that after the quotes received, then we could discuss it at a select board meeting.
It was more like a fact-finding mission to inform the process at that point, yep.
But I mean, given the fact that both the police chief and fires said that they, if anything happened, they wouldn't go in, I won't be responsible for selling those buildings and put them on the, for sale.
Well, you could sell, you could sell the property, but that would take away from being able to drive in and out that way.
Correct, so.
So.
Alright, um, Kristen, I just looked, September thirteenth is the next historical meeting, but.
Great.
And I was gonna ask you something, oh, on the assessment, um, I know that there's a bunch of buildings, and I know that we really can't tackle them all at once, but, uh, was wondering, you know, there's always the need for space, they need space, storage. I don't know who they are, and I don't know how much they would need, um, and considering that the van is parked in the old highway barn.
Yep.
There's not a lot of room left, so maybe in tandem, can we find out how much room is left there? If the building is even usable with water and sewer? And I don't even know how we'd begin to find out who they are who need storage.
It's been historical over the past few years.
But we're under no obligation to hold, to hold their material. I asked.
You asked who?
We are under no obligation to hold, first of all, anything that's the Historical Society because they are a fa- separate nonprofit from the town.
Society, not Historical Commission?
The commission, um, I mean, unfortunately, unless the board takes a vote, they have no right to put things in buildings.
In diff- well, I mean, that's why I think they need to be told where they can put things, and that's, I mean, that's what we were hearing over the years.
Yeah, I mean, and that's what I thought the curatorial building was going to take care of, um, in all honesty.
Building's not big enough for much of anything, have you been in?
I have, and it's full, I, I think that, um, you know, when I've been upstairs in the fire station, because that is now full as well, um, there are a number of items that do not relate to Berlin at all, in fact, there's things that say Cape Cod. So I think as a first, you know, step of good faith, there needs to be a thinning out of the collection for what relates to Berlin. And then there needs to be a true understanding of what the space needs are from that point. Um, and then we could talk about, you know, the old highway garage, out of the older vacant, currently vacant buildings is the most structurally sound and needed the least amount of work. So if you're gonna keep any building, I would recommend that one is the one to keep.
The, the high-
The old highway one, yep. All that needed was a bathroom basically, but if you're not, if you're gonna use it for storage, you don't have to do the bathroom, obviously.
Now, June, can you help with this question that I have? What's that?
They don't have water.
The old highway barn, right.
It was borrowed.
Um, so, I just wanted to, I don't know why, but I have like a vague recollection that the town does not own the property.
They own, I believe, the property and the building, it's just they didn't have any water going to it to put in a bathroom.
And so the water that- Right, that's what I, that's what I was thinking, so there's no water, so, I mean, where, where do we, as long as the town owns it, or owns the, uh, Old Highway Barn, then is that still a, a deal that?
I can't answer that, I don't, I don't know what the situation was at the time when they stopped using the barn. But I think they've shut the water off from the barn.
Oh, they have, okay.
I think so.
Yeah. And if it's just for storage, you wouldn't need the water, so we'd be okay for that purpose. I guess I question how many buildings we wanna have for storage in this town though, or hang on to for storage.
I would say one, one, but.
But I will, I will tell you.
But we, right now, we don't have any designated, is that?
No, but right now, the contents of the Bullard House fill village power.
Yes.
And there's things-
I wonder if that's something that they can continue to do though?
It's full.
It's completely full between those items and the pieces of the Hearst House, from what I understand. Um, and then there's items in the second floor of the fire station and in the second floor above public safety here as well. So, I, you know, I'm a little bit frustrated that the collection continues to somehow magically expand. Um, we've had to put a, basically a padlock upstairs because there was a screwdriver mark where even though we changed the lock, someone had actually jimmyed the lock with a screwdriver to get in there and more items appeared. So I don't really feel obligated to give more space until there's respect for our regulations and our buildings.
I, I agree, I, I think, you know, this has been a problem for years. And, you know, it, it was before you came on that we were still dealing with it then.
Yeah, this started right from the, the get-go because items were appearing at the old fire station two years ago when I started. In fact, Rich, Rich Hanks was saying, oh, I don't think there's much over there, I said, have you been over there lately? And, yeah.
Unfortunately, there were keys passed around to that building that should not have been passed around to that building, and, and our old TA put in a, there will be no more, and it was basically, what?
Right.
No, that's not exactly what they said, but, okay.
Well, yes, for, for TV, for TV, uh, that's, that's what they said, so, yeah, um, this stuff needs, needs to move. And if the town is in no obligation to hold this stuff, then.
But I think we do need to be respectful of if it's Berlin stuff. You know, and it, and it maybe passes the muster of being just Berlin, you know, things that are historical. Then that's, we, we need to be respectful and, you know, say, this is where it goes and that's it. And if you get more than that, then forget it.
Well, absolutely, I would like to see, after a thinning out, what is left that is relative to Berlin and then make a decision on space.
Got it, and that's all you get.
Yeah, that's it, you get ten feet, ten square feet, and that's it.
I mean, that, you have to understand too, that the select board is the, you are the owners of town property. So it is your decision what goes where.
No, I don't feel bad at all, because I feel badly for other committees and commissions that are like, we need space, and because it's been all, been sucked up, it's sitting in private residences.
Right, I just think it has to be a mutually respectful situation. It can't be, um, a collection that is constantly growing, I think there are multiples of many items that could be reduced. I mean, there are pink painted cinder blocks and doors.
Bricks.
Pre-painted bricks, yes, thank you, and doors up in the fire station, and I'm really, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I just feel like it goes both ways, if their request is for more space, they also need to be respectful of the fact that we don't have unlimited space.
Get it, I understand completely, alright, understand completely, I'm speaking for Scott too because I,
Fair enough.
You know, I think that he would be here saying the same thing.
Yep, agreed.
And, and I don't think he's going to be, um, misunderstand the fact that, you know, they don't need an endless supply of storage. They should be able to have this much, and that's it, and maybe it's even using the Bullard House as a place to store things.
Well, and some things will go into the Bullard House, but as I was told, that would be like a rotating collection, so they would still need storage for
There we go.
A lot of those items sometimes.
You have a space to keep things and the space where things are exhibited.
Well, that's a historical thing, but yeah, I think we just need to start making that very clear and stop being wishy-washy.
I don't know, when did the deci- when was the decision made that that would be a museum?
Oh, they've talked about it for quite a while.
I, I just don't remember.
No, they, they have, different meetings they will talk about, and unfortunately, from the ones I've watched, they don't even have an idea. If they, they're saying it's a rotating museum, but there's no-
Plan?
Today will be fall stuff, tomorrow will be historical war stuff, six, there is nothing like that from what I've been able to see, it's just we need a rotating museum, which unfortunately begets the, well, if you don't know what you want, then you don't know what you can throw away, so you're now keeping everything.
And if I'm not mistaken, the Bullard House belongs to the commission, that is the one property or the one building that is not owned by the select board, I could be wrong, I thought I looked this up at one point.
We went to town meeting though, and-
The town bought that building.
I think, no, I think it was split.
Really?
It was like three twenty-five or three fifty.
So it's probably a care, custody and control thing, is it under the care, custody and control of the Historical Commission? So if they wanna put a muse- museum in there, they have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
One thing though, that they have to still follow all local and state regulations, which are, you know, when they're doing work on- One thing though, that they have to still follow all local and state regulations, which are, you know, when they're doing work on it's procurement, prevailing wage. All of that because it is on town-owned property. So that's one of the tricky things.
I honestly thought it was a town, a town house belonging to the town.
Alright, well, maybe we can work concurrently to figure out who the mysterious they people are that need space beyond.
Well, you would know better than anybody if someone has asked for storage space.
Um, recreation has asked for some space to store some of their equipment, um, and historical.
I know that recreation, um, has historically stored it at people's homes.
Right.
Like it, like the coaches will take the things that, you know, they need.
Baseball. I mean, you're talking like decorations and stuff like that.
There's soccer and there's, uh, the lining machine.
Yeah, so on the, um, co- card from the assessors. Uh, for the Bullard House, right, that's the Bullard House.
Yeah.
It says on the front, record of ownership, Town of Berlin, Joyce Wickle, Alan and Joyce Wickle, Alan and Dale Ellis. Russell and Florence Hawkins.
Those are the previous owners.
Right.
But it says current owner, and it got kinda cut off. So you've got Town of Berlin's Wickles, Wickle and something.
No, I think Town of Berlin is the last current owner. That's my guess.
So we can confirm.
There was something from, I think, the seventies that I looked a while back at that. Sometimes the numbers pop in my head, it amazes me. Okay, perfect. And it may just be the town meeting gave them control over the building, but that you still own the property. I mean, it's still, it's, it's still a town asset.
We, we went for the whole amount.
Yeah.
That was like either three fifty or three and a quarter. Yeah.
Okay.
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 Alright, well, it's ongoing, so yeah, Kristen, if you can find out and get back to us on the, the quotes. But yeah, if he can't get it, get it to us, then we've gotta giddy up and get that brown barn spent down.
And two more quick things on that. One, everything that's purchased with town funds should be in a town building and not at someone's house. Because, A, it could disappear, um, and then there could be accusations of somebody, you know, taking town-owned property. I'm not saying that anybody necessarily would do that, but what happens if there's a yard sale or, you know, something gets thrown away or what have you?
Or people don't know who owns it.
They don't know, right, they think that it's theirs because it's been in their garage for fifteen years. So really, we need to make space for anything purchased with town-owned funds. I also think somehow we need to start separating what's been donated to the society versus what's been donated to the commission, because those are two very different entities.
And unfortunately, um, at the town hall upstairs, that's why they locked underneath the stage. Because there was stuff under it that had been placed, so they took it out and they screwed every door shut. Alright, um, so we'll just keep chugging, chugging on the building assessments. Um, ARPA projects, any updates?
Um, just holding for this, until we figure out the stormwater. I did update the spreadsheet, so you can see, I believe the amount is, is about fifteen thousand. I hadn't pulled it up yet, that we have unappropriated at this time.
Okay. Well, I know last week or when we met, it was around nine.
It went up because, yep, it's fifteen thousand, six seventy-four and fifteen cents.
Okay.
And so a few projects have closed out, um, that, that gave a little bit of money. The recreation summer program has closed out. The, um, let's see, what else did we, were able to close out? Um, I'm trying to think. Oh, um, the police cruiser and the voting machines and poll pads, we were able to close out as well. So those both returned a little bit of funding.
Cool, okay.
But I really would like to hold off at this point before doing anything else.
No, makes sense. Alright, uh, blah, 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 uh, discuss possible vote TA goals. I know that we delayed it last meeting, uh, cause Kristen, you weren't feeling well, but, um, I. And I know that Scott's not here, but it's kinda silly just to keep delaying, so. Chris, if you're good, I'm comfy going through them and taking them off and hopefully not. Hopefully not adding.
Alright, do you want, do you want me to walk through them?
Yeah.
Um, first and foremost, all ARPA projects under contract slash ordered by December thirty-first. That is my main focus outside of the budget right now. Um, because we need that to avoid turning back grant funds. Uh, the radio project, phases two and phase three. Um, I think the soil importation bylaws, we should talk about transferring to planning board.
I had a comment on that.
What do you think?
We already had, um, one of, um, the town council from, what was the previous town council's name?
Uh, KP Law?
Yes. We had, um, Amy.
Mm-hmm.
Kreswick, something like that.
Almost like Klobuchar, that's the.
She's. Um, Amy.
I know who you're talking about.
Begins with a K.
Yes, it does, and she had already drafted something and why we.
Had?
Yes, she's already drafted something and it just got kinda pushed to the side and we never did anything with it.
Okay, I don't.
If you wanted to take a look at that, I mean, I'm sure you ought to be able to find it somewhere.
Okay, let me look for it.
Quessel, that's her name, Amy Quessel.
That's close to Klobuchar.
There was also, um, actually Kristen, I can send it to you. I have a copy.
Great.
Dated March, January, March, March seventh, twenty twenty-two. There was also a question when Margaret was here. That there was a town, Middleborough?
Yes, they tried to ban it outright and they.
And, yeah, so they did some warning, so I think there was gonna be some discussion to potentially look in, but then it just went.
I, I really think maybe, uh, planning board, I don't know, do you think it would get done? Do you think they'd put that at the top of the list? It takes them quite a while to get things done.
I just don't, it goes along with development, right, and it goes along with site. Um, you know, renovation, expansion, you know, I, I just feel like they have more of the knowledge. That's more in their wheelhouse. To me, it never made sense to have that be under the select board.
Oh, no, it shouldn't be, and that's why we've, um, we relied on that, um, gr- that group.
Which we disbanded.
Correct, because they never met, they never met.
They, they wanted to be disbanded, I think.
They, they did because I don't think they had the know- the knowledge specifically to implement that bylaw. And the bylaw is so restrictive, they were basically just telling everyone no to everything. It was, it's a really difficult bylaw to implement the way that it's written right now.
That's why they were gonna combine those two bylaws.
Yep.
Soil and partition and.
Kindly, like kind soil.
Right.
Uh, because they were contradictions. One said you can bring in a foot of dirt.
So she combined.
You can bring in ten feet of dirt.
Okay, see, I came across the Middleborough stuff, but I never came across the KP Law, so.
I don't know where it is.
Check your email.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Why don't I at least do a little digging into that and we start from there?
Because if it's done already, you know, maybe it just needs.
Little polishing up or.
Or something.
Or maybe not, maybe it's almost done, okay.
Do you have a copy of it too?
Great. Alright, so we'll look into that one a little bit further. Um, the payroll, sorry, payroll leave accruals project is complete, so that can actually come off. Uh, accruals went on payroll beginning the week of August eleventh, which is wonderful. Um, complete streets design and construction, so this is for the sidewalks, streets downtown. For pedestrian, bike and travel friendly access. That, you know, is underway. And needs to continue, obviously, because we have a grant. Uh, website updates. I actually have really good news about this. Um, Capital Strategic Solutions, which is a. Sort of new, but not that new, um, consulting firm, and actually the owner, or, uh, the president lives in Berlin. Um, Nicole Figaroa, I believe, is, is her name. Um, we actually got a quote to update the existing website. They would take off all the old links, they would reorder everything. They would make it user-friendly for a price not to exceed nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, and we've allocated ten thousand dollars in ARPA funding. I know Chi, she's not there anymore, but Chief, um, met with them as well on the public safety side, was really impressed and happy with. What they offered on the public safety side as well. So I think we'll move forward with that. That does tie into ARPA. But, you know, I'm kind of calling out the projects individually as well. Um, public safety second floor renovation needs to continue. Playground, playground replacement, sorry, I can't talk tonight. Um, we received the initial quote, we're working on the procurement to make sure that we can get it from that specific purchasing collaborative. Um, Bullard House in eighteen seventy drainage. Um, there seemed to be some consensus and I agree that the senior greeter program should go, at least for now.
And, and what was that, what was that even gonna look like? I don't even remember talking about it at a meeting.
So the idea was to have, you know, basically to engage some seniors and have them down in the lobby. And also to, um, help direct people throughout the building because people were wandering around, not knowing where to go. But since we brought Ken on board, he's done some great things with signage that have been really helpful. So I think we're slightly in a better space and I think there are other ways we could potentially engage seniors.
I, and I also feel as though that kind of a program might just fall apart after a while and not be successful. There may be some that say, yeah, I don't really wanna do that anymore, and then no, you wouldn't be able to maybe recruit people.
It, it's entirely possible. It was sort of just a brainstorming idea that Victoria and I had come up with, um, that we, it didn't get implemented, so.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree that, I mean, delete it.
And if it does come back, it's not your ball. It's, it's COA director, so.
Or.
Yep.
Uh, assessors or something.
Well, it wouldn't be the assessors.
I mean, the, well, the assessors handles the money, correct?
Oh, you're talking about senior workoff.
Oh, no, no, sen- oh, yeah, seniors workoff, but the senior greeter, that would be all under COA for them to, to figure out what to do with it.
Senior workoffs that this was originally, um.
Yeah, but it came up through COA.
Yeah, that's okay.
So it should go back.
Yeah. Yeah.
No.
No, it, it, it was a conversation between me and Victoria.
Yes, but doesn't mean it had to be council on aging people.
No, 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 be run by though, or overseen by.
Okay, yeah.
You know, council on aging slash me helping get it off the ground and, you know, doesn't necessarily make sense at this point. I think we get the new person on board.
Bring it back, I mean, they could figure out how to run it, I guess.
Pavilion?
Pavilion, um, getting updated, uh, apparently I didn't get the updated quote. But, um, also need the updated procurement information because it's been a year since we worked on that, since we changed the site at town meeting. Bi-weekly payroll out, first bi-weekly paycheck will be November twentieth. Internet at the transfer station can come off. We have it, yay. Um, there was consensus to, or some consensus to remove the Barnes Hill Road speed limit matter. I have an issue that's going to resurface, but I, um, as Maplewood is up and running again. But, um, I don't know that that should necessarily be a goal per se. I think that's a citizen request of the select board and the board and. And with my recommendation.
That's kind of what I just wanted to remind us of, was that it was residents.
Yeah.
Who brought this to us. We can't just delete it. We still need to address it. If you don't want it to be a goal, that's fine.
Yeah, it's not a goal. There's nothing that she can do because.
This is like an everyday type of thing.
So that one to me, uh, if you don't wanna remove it, just leave it there, then just drag it down to the bottom, cause there's nothing you can do about it. Speed limit is not your purview, that's police.
Well, they really wanted to have it be no trucks.
They did, and so we did a traffic count, um, and it looked like the traffic count. Might justify a heavy commercial truck exemption, but the problem is that just shifts the traffic somewhere else in town, which is gonna create a problem. So from a policy standpoint, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that the select board do that.
Nope, because they go up Linden now and people complain.
Have we even gotten back to the group?
Oh, yeah, Jack Malahe and I have had periodic connection and conversations.
That, yeah, it's still on the table, but it's, you know, it's not, well, he doesn't know it's a goal, so we don't have to.
No, we've just checked in and we did say we could revisit the conversation if and when the project got started back up again.
And it may be coming back again.
Seeing as how it came from the residents, I would expect that initiative to come from them as well.
Right.
If they continue to have issues.
Ag- agree. So whether it comes off or not, it's not, I don't think it's an issue.
But it's up to you guys.
So are you tagging these as maybe we need to take a vote and get rid of them?
Yeah, I mean, we can just, we'll go down them after, after she's, um, after Kristen's just given us like four more updates. And then it won't take long for us to vote.
Alright, then there's the brown barn and the parking at South Common. We did get the Commons with an S. We did get the, um, fifty thousand dollars in ARPA. Plus the fifty thousand from the FY twenty-six capital to enable us to move forward with that. And I did request that quote as I mentioned. Um, ALS study, there's not a whole lot we can do with that right now. The chief has been trying to bring a regional effort together.
Not yours.
And to no avail at this time.
But, but I'd really like to hear an update from him.
Okay.
Um, you know, is that, is that right with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I, I wanna know why, you know, maybe it's not gonna work in Berlin, maybe there's.
Everyone's working in silos in their individual towns and no one wants to give up that control to a regional effort. In, in all honesty, I mean.
And, and why maybe we can't do that, I guess, would be helpful to know.
Yes.
Yeah.
It really comes down to, but yeah, I can certainly get an update.
I think we've never had a discussion at the select board meeting about it.
I think it's come up in a couple of his reports, but maybe not like an extensive discussion.
Not like the reasons why and, you know, or, or maybe just a, you know, I checked with Hudson or I checked with, you know, Bolton or something. Just an update to tell us that, but.
There, yeah, there seems to be more of a tradition in Massachusetts of police departments collaborating, fire not so much. So, but I know that the chief has spent a lot of time working on trying to build those relationships. And trying to move that regional kind of effort forward, which is really the only way it would make sense to do this. And, you know.
You, 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 you need to be very thankful that our police and fire work together now. What, was it twenty years ago, maybe? They did not.
Oh, no, I meant police amongst police versus fire amongst fire, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to clarify. Um, facilities plan implementation, obviously, I think it is one that should be on here. Um, one of the suggestions was assist conservation and site selection for the rail trail. Um, I don't know that I agree with that one because they already know where they want to go. With the feasibility study, so I don't know that there's much for me to offer.
We'll vote as we go down. Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to offer my opinion, which is, um, I think we should let the conservation take the lead on that one.
Yeah.
And have it not be, um, one of Kristen's goals, but you would assist if necessary.
Happy to. I mean, I've been helping them with the contract process and, um, looking at the, cause we have the ARPA money that's going into this as well.
Because this'll end, end up being a town meeting article too, right? At some point, putting in a.
Real trail?
Real trail.
Uh, down the line if there's grant funding.
I mean, how could we do that if it's not successful, then you did not accomplish the goal?
Right. I mean, right now, what they have is funding to do a feasibility study. And I believe up to twenty-five percent design on the portion of the trail that's owned by DCR slash MBTA. So that, it's already laid out in the grant.
Yeah.
The grant agreements, what it can cover, um.
So, you know, I, once again, if, if it's there, it's there as a goal, but I think that conservation needs to take the lead on it.
Makes sense, and I'll assist with whatever they, they need. And then the last one that was brought up was develop a plan to redesign employee reporting, so it all goes through the town administrator. Um, I.
That was a suggestion by Scott.
By Scott, so I'd wanna clarify with him. I don't know if he's referring to like Board of Health employees and Board of Assessor employees.
You have no authority over them.
I don't, and that would require an amendment to the TA bylaw and a vote of town meeting and approval of special legislation by the state. So I don't know that that should be a goal.
Just a discussion with him.
But, no, I mean, if those offices, if elected, uh, elected spots are not under our purview. Do not step into that sandwich. Why? Why would you? You know, that's their department. If they, if a department head comes to you and says, blah, 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 employee. I'm having issues with blah, 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 blah. Can you suggest what I do? Yes, but for Chris to go to you and say, oh, you know that big person in my department, you gotta get rid of her, cause I don't wanna. Absolutely not. No, no, no. If that's an elected position, uh-uh.
Well, we did do this for tax collector, uh, treasurer. And we, we have now someone she appoints or we appoint.
Correct, if it's under our direction.
Yeah.
Then I'm okay with that, but if it's an elected position, I would run as far as you can down the hall.
And treasurer were elected positions.
But we had an issue that needed to be resolved.
No, I think it was just that they wanted to be, have it be appointed.
Alright, so here's the problem I do run into, right? You have offices that are running day-to-day operations here without oversight from someone who's here day-to-day. Which can be challenging, and I am happy to step in and help whenever I can, but I often feel like I'm overstepping. Because I don't have jurisdiction.
Correct.
But I do have the experience. But I do have the experience to be able to help with those issues. And I often don't get pulled in until there's like a major HR issue. And then at that point, sometimes it's a mess and it's really difficult to fix. So from an HR perspective, to be able to be involved in the day-to-day process and operations of those offices reduces liability for the town. And it would be a lot easier from a coordination aspect across offices too. Because you do have some silos out there. And I just think, you know, it's, it's uncommon in this day and age of municipal government to have elected bodies running town departments that are day-to-day. Town clerk is, is exception because there are still a lot of elected town clerks. But, you know, you've got the Board of Assessor's office that's open four days a week. And, you know, if someone has a complaint during the day, I, I, I can't help them. I have to refer them to someone who's not here. So sometimes that is a little challenging. And I'm not saying I want the responsibility of taking over additional departments. I'm just saying from an HR perspective and a collaboration perspective, it does make sense to have those large departments functioning as one. Is it a future goal? Perhaps? I don't think it's my goal. I think it's up to the town.
Yeah, and maybe we need Scott here to discuss it a little bit more, so, you know, I'm okay with waiting on that.
You, you have a conversation with him, see if you can hash it out and um then. And we, we, before we even add this to the list, I think we need to discuss it again and vote on it to add it.
I think you need to discuss it with the department heads and how would they feel. Because if I'm a department head and all of a sudden if you come to me and say, hey, you're a department head and now I'm gonna oversee her, I'm gonna be pretty honked off at you. So I think you need their.
What do you, what do you mean?
Well, if, if this one is to.
You just mean they, they, they need to support the idea?
Have some buy-in into it, have some opposing views, because if it's have boards, um, you know, now with the to transfer HR authority to, to the TA, so I'm working in X office. I'm an employee, I'm working in X office. My boss, who is a um elected official, is not here. You're here, you see me, oh, I don't know, doing something that I shouldn't be doing. Now you come in with your HR hat on going, mm, and now that person is gonna call their boss and be like, ah.
And they can completely overrule me.
Right, Kristen's in here doing what? What? I didn't know she was doing that.
Which is why now I can't do anything, so I have to totally go, you can do whatever you want, even if it causes risk to the town. That's where I get stuck.
Right, so that, but I'm saying with that one, before we even vote, I would love for you to talk to all the department heads. Because I wouldn't want you swimming in my pool on this.
What actual elected officials would be, would, would also be talking about the town clerk?
Not necessarily. Although I'm used to seeing an elected town clerk, but the employees in the office hired by and reporting to the select board. That's an unusual setup, but.
Well, town clerk is also along with Board of Health and assessors, I would say. I think, I think that, you know, if you're gonna, you can't just tackle several of them, you have to. I think that's what this is about.
Is an elected employee, so it's a little bit different than an elected board overseeing um a full-time department head. Because essentially the town clerk is like, is a elected department head, so it's a, it's a little bit different, I would say.
And I, that would be the first, probably the first thing that I would consider um bringing them on as appointed.
And I have to tell you, there's a lot of towns that have switched to appointed town clerks. There's a lot of towns that the town clerks say absolutely no way. We wanna stay separate from the select board. It, it's really a, a decision of town meeting. It would be something that would have to go on a warrant for, for a town meeting to decide.
And I think Boylston has, Boylston has done, uh, um, had their town clerk as appointed now.
It's becoming more common.
I, I think so.
All right, well, we'll get more on that. All right, so, Chris, do you wanna like, we'll scoot down the list and vote on what stays and what goes? I'm just gonna look at the ones um really kind of in, I would say in green, but they're not in green. So, senior greeter program, um, is there a motion to remove that from Kristen's goals?
Yes.
I second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, off.
Wait, was, was there any about that?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, we just were gonna, we were just going to look more into the town council.
Yes, yep. Um, the second one is the Barnes Hill Road's speed limit. Um, it's down as remove, um, is there.
You know, I'm glad we had a discussion on that because from what is written here, it almost looked like you just wanted to delete it and not have it anymore at all. And I'm glad we had the discussion saying that it's still on the table. The residents, right, right, but it's not a goal.
So, is there a motion to remove it as a goal?
Yes.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's off the list.
Okay.
Uh, ALS study, next steps, really should be in the fire chief. We'll have a chitty chat with him, but I don't think it's under the purview of TA goal.
And, and we could, we could still take it off as a goal. I don't mind taking it off as a goal. I just do wanna hear from Mike about.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I would make a motion to remove it as a goal.
All right, I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. And then the last one really is assist conservation and site selection for rail trail. Uh, totally in agreement with you. This goes back to conservation. It's in their ballpark. If they need assistance, they can come, but Kristen has no. You don't need to be there. You don't need to be involved in the rail trail site selection.
Fantastic. You've made my day.
But she would be there if they needed.
Oh, absolutely. If there's questions, hey, how do I, blah, 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 but I don't think it's fair to Kristen to say, as part of your goal, you need to get us a rail trail.
No. Technical assistance, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But.
All right, all right.
Sounds good.
So, motion to take that one off?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the last one, uh, we just need further discussion.
Yes.
Okay, cool. So, um, if maybe by the end of, eh, what's it, April, September? If you can come back with just this like cleaned up um for it, because I mean, and, and, you know, obviously take the ones that are complete off. Um, and then we'll be good to go.
Yeah, at least put them in green.
All right, uh.
If they're accomplished.
All right, so next up on the agenda is uh discuss some possible vote on electricity services agreement amendment, first point power.
Okay, so this is the adder funds that we put on hold because we weren't sure with the new contract what we were going to do with the adder funds. And we have come up with a plan through the energy committee. Many thanks to Tim Wysocki and the energy committee on that, um, to do a part-time um energy manager. Um, and we have applied for a grant for that that we would supplement with adder funds. So at this time, what we would need to do is have the vote, the, the board vote on an electricity services agreement amendment. Otherwise known as an ESA agreement amendment. And it is set up for me to sign, so you would authorize, that's just the way they set it up. But you'd authorize the town administrator to sign.
All right, so we make a motion to vote on.
The ESA agreement amendment?
I will second that.
And do you want to include the fact that we will, we want you to sign?
Yes, please.
So that should be a second one.
That can all go in one if you want.
Okay.
That's fine. So, so moved.
All right, so, and, and I'll second it, uh, to approve the electricity services agreement amendment and authorize the town administrator to sign paperwork as needed. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Uh, next up, a longstanding tradition, Berlin's Land Club request to hold a voluntary toll road in the center of town on September twenty-first from eight AM to eleven thirty.
AM.
AM.
Um, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, coffee talk coming up on the nineteenth. Kristen, as you've mentioned a couple of times, that we're probably gonna lean towards a fall meeting, so I think it makes zero sense uh to have a coffee talk in September and then try and round people up three weeks before we're gonna have a town meeting to have a chat with them, so. Chris, what do you think?
I agree.
Okay. So, do you, if you wanna whiz that one off the calendar and say, oh, do you need to make a motion? Do we need a motion on that to take it off?
To move coffee talk?
Okay, all right, so if you wanna just whiz it off, that would be awesome.
That'd be great.
All right.
And then what, when would we move it to or?
Well, when's our town, when's our town meeting-ish?
The, the date that was initially held was December ninth. I did make a note to confirm with Eloise um and the election officials and folks that that still works for them.
Okay, so do you wanna wait to put it on the calendar, the coffee talk?
Um.
Till you, till you hear back from Eloise?
But I would tentatively probably lean towards either November fourteenth. I would stay away from the twenty-first because then you're starting, when is Thanksgiving this year?
Um, it's gonna be the.
Twenty-eighth.
Oh, it's late, okay.
All right.
I don't, I would think you'd wanna go two, two weeks probably before the Thanksgiving, cuz people start to travel the week before sometimes.
So like the twenty, so fourteenth and the twenty-first will aim, and then jiggle as needed. Okay.
So coffee talk potentially fourteen or twenty, eleven fourteen or eleven twenty-one, okay.
Uh, all right, next up is to discuss the acquisition, and I'm assuming that this is part of your, all right.
This is gonna either hurt your head or put you to sleep or make you wanna pull your hair out. I'm just being really honest here.
I can do all three.
And I also think we, we do wanna get Scott in, in on this conversation, but time is really of the essence here. Um, as, as.
Just an update.
Yeah, as you know, Chris and I, and back to Margaret, have been working with River Bridge and we did get the fourth modification passed at town meeting. So following the approval in May, I began working with town council on acquiring those properties and talking about preparing an RFP to, for disposition of the wells and the water rights. There are two wells located on parcel six B, and upon acquisition of that property for a dollar, the town would have the exclusive ownership of both wells. Those wells were previously permitted as a public water supply and can be reactivated, so there's a very significant value to those wells. There are several adjacent properties that have either expressed interest in that water from that well or could potentially benefit from it, including Cordelia's Farm. The Worcester Sanding Gravel Site, which is the future home to a day program for adults with autism. The Stevens Foundation, who's interested in doing a public museum and event space featuring Berlin history and Mr. Stevens' private collection. And the Berlin, Berlin Planning Board has talked about potentially putting a small cottage housing development in there as well. Uh, owning and operating a public water supply system is extremely costly. There's also a number of costs involved in re permitting those wells and getting them up and running cuz they are inactive. That cost is estimated to be three hundred thousand dollars. Um, based on my research, I would recommend that the and, and initial discussions with DEP and town council, I would recommend the town sell the water or the water rights to another entity who's willing to operate it as a public water supply system and retain rights to a portion of the water for the town. And this will be done through an open public process via request for proposals. So it's not going directly to one particular person. It's disposition of public land. It has to be an open process. So here's where it gets complicated. A portion or a significant portion of that parcel, six B, falls under a conservation restriction. So, the State Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs sign on to all conservation restrictions. And they have to be involved in any change of ownership. So when the property gets transferred to the town, um, it has to go first of all to another entity like Sudbury, our friends at Sudbury Valley Trust perhaps, um, during the acquisition process. Otherwise, believe it or not, the CR merges with the ownership and it extinguishes the restriction, which we're obviously not wanting. We wanna keep a CR on that property. Any change in ownership, however, also triggers something called Article ninety-seven, which is a very cumbersome and time-consuming process under the Public Land Protection Act. It's gonna require some further town meeting authorization. In addition to this, the current CR, conservation restriction on parcel six B, as we recently learned, restricts the use of the water to the owner of the property. So, according to the deed of conservation restriction that was recorded back in two thousand seven, um, the water can be provided for the benefit of the owners and the residences to be constructed on Lot Six, and that is it. So therefore, I believe the select board should request a modification to the conservation restriction on parcel six B. And that's for the following reasons. When you change ownership from private to a public entity like the town, it's a reasonable opportunity to request a modification of the CR and expand who can use the water. I don't believe this modification represents a change in use nor a change to the wells. It is simply a change to the distribution of the water. I don't see this modification as either contrary or detrimental to the original intent of the CR. I do not believe the town ever intended, based on many conversations I've had, to become a public water supplier. And I would strongly recommend that against that path due to cost and logistics. We still wanna keep the entire land within a CR, including the wells. This will not change. And I think really importantly to look at, this is a revenue generating opportunity for the town that will be lost if we're unable to modify the CR. The purpose of acquiring sole ownership of both of those wells was to sell the water rights slash the wells or, and/or the wells to help recoup funding for the town that was lost from the original River Bridge Development Agreement. It was part of the modification that we sold to town meeting. I believe failing to move forward with this plan would be contrary to the spirit and intent of the town meeting vote. So, to this end, I have asked the Conservation Commission to take a vote on modifying the CR. Uh, they have put us on their September eighteenth agenda. And I would actually request that it be a joint meeting between Conservation, the Select Board to discuss this matter as it has a significant financial impact on the town.
Excellent, excellent.
Sorry, I know that was a lot of information.
No, it was very good. You put it all in.
It's a, it's a lot, and this is why it's, it's been taking so long, because it's been, every step of the process, we've run up against issues.
And, and you have to go through a lot of this in order to take, take uh the land on as our own.
Right, and I, and land use, it would be great if we had a town planner. This is absolutely something that a town planner would assist with. But I'm getting a crash course in uh land use as well as we go through this, um, cuz why not? So, um, you know, I just feel like, I understand the importance of preserving us conservation restriction as it was intended originally.
Yeah, and I think, I think the board does too.
Absolutely. And, you know, I, I do believe that conservation never wants to modify CRs and I, and I get that. But it does happen in other communities, and when there's an interest that the town has, I think that there's an argument to make that it's different than a private person coming forward saying, I just wanna take this CR off my land because of X. It, it's a different scenario, so.
It's a, it's a very different scenario.
So, I guess the first question for the board is, what do you think of this? And do you wanna come to Conservation or you want me to go or we all go to Conservation to have this conversation? Because this was part of the deal that we made with the Sunnys.
I, I think when we go to Conservation, if we go all of us, which I think is a good idea. I think we just have to be, we all need to have the same direction that we're going.
Which is why I wanna talk about it, cuz I don't know how everybody feels about it.
Yeah.
So, first of all, there's no meeting listed yet for Conservation on the eighteenth, so.
It was kind of a placeholder just for.
So, I would say in the, and, and I know that they're having the, they are having the eighteenth, so.
You mean, there's no placeholder for the town?
Nope, none on my town government. There is no meeting listed for ConCon on the fourteenth. Eighteenth. They have one on the fourth of September, but it has been canceled and they have no future meetings, so. Um, that's one thing in order, I mean, we can probably go ahead and post a meeting for the eighteenth so that the three of us can show up or two of us can show up, but if it's posted, then we can all have a nice chit chat um, with them. The CR, um, I can guarantee you a bazillion dollars. You're gonna run headfirst into a brick wall. That they're not gonna wanna change it uh because there was, it would be potential concern about, well, you changed one CR. What are you gonna do for the others? So I think you need to be able to list the twenty-six month process for how long it's gonna take and who needs to be involved in it, in that it's just not a, hey, you wanna change it? Yeah, okay, let's change it.
I think she's got a good.
I do too, but I'm saying that needs to be, I would print it out.
Yes, so I put all this in a draft, this is like a draft memo that I was reading from because I had to get my thoughts down. And this is something I would want to give to Conservation and the Select Board.
I would give it to them ahead of time?
Yep.
So that they're not uh seeing it for the fir-
I don't know if I would or not.
Yeah, but they're not gonna vote on it. If you dump something on them that night that wants them to change a CR, I guarantee you will not.
Do they?
I think we want to know sooner rather than later because we're supposed to close on the property by the end of December.
Yeah, so I would get it out to them ahead of time.
Unless we amend the agreement again.
Oh, we, we did, we, I didn't even know that it would be. Oh, we, we did, we, I didn't even know that it would be by the end of December.
That was the date that was anticipate, an anticipated closing by the end of December.
Okay, good to know.
I would put, um, in your draft, I would pull up the why we need to do this quicker.
Okay.
Then down the bottom, um, of it to say, this is what happened.
Well, I, I mean, you, you-
I know them. They're gonna tune out within the first thirty seconds as soon as you say, we need to change the conservation restriction. No, you can't change a conservation restriction, then you're gonna change it for everybody else who wants it.
Say it that way.
No, but I, I have been in enough meetings and have had enough discussions with them to understand how they think. So the sooner that you can get information to them, send it to Carolyn first.
Yeah.
You know, and have Carolyn disseminate it, but if they can see off the top that it's not an overnight thing, that it's for the benefit of the town, it's for the benefit of Cordelia's, it's for the benefit of the potential additional business in the town. Cottage housing, I would probably move way, way down on the list, um, you know, but put whatever business is going to be in there. Then you might be able to get some traction with it.
Uh, yeah, I, and I mean, I think-
I know them too.
Well, and, and I think what's troubling to me about just an outright no without having, you know, discussion about it, is unreasonable, especially because we're talking about town-owned property. You know, when we talked about LED signs, we don't want LED signs in town, but we're gonna allow it at the school and on town-owned property because it makes sense. There are different things that happen on town-owned property, it's not unreasonable to say, you know, we have other means, you know, I, I'm sorry, other methods that, you know, sometimes make sense for the town to do, that doesn't make sense for a private property owner to do. And I'm not saying that we wanna give ourselves an exception or anything like that, but I think that the fact that it went to town meeting, it was endorsed, it was presented that way.
From Conservation said anything about not wanting to do, you know, this either.
They weren't aware, so obviously can't be that important if it's something they weren't aware of.
So that's why I'm wondering if you send it ahead of time, you phrase the eighteenth as a, let's have a chat.
Yep.
Come with questions.
Well, we already, we did, we, we told Carolyn that.
Well, you may have told Carolyn that, I don't think she's told the rest of the board about it.
Yet, because it wasn't, it wasn't even definite.
And then it's up to her to decide if they wanna vote on it or not. So here's the question, they say yes, yay, oh goodness, what do they say if they say no? What if they say, nope, we wanna take a vote right now, no, 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 fails, what happens?
It's dead.
What's dead?
The whole thing.
The whole, we can't sell the water or the rights or the well.
Can't even buy the property.
Use it for ourselves. No, um-
You can still buy the property.
You can still acquire the property, but you can't sell the water rights. And we're not gonna become a waters, public water supply.
Basically unless I decide to put a house on that, if you allow me to put a house on that, you've got wells of water that will go unused.
Correct.
Then that needs to be stated.
Two ten thousand gallon a day wells.
That needs to be stated. You just can't say it's dead, what is dead and what is the financial impact to the town of it being dead?
Well, and that's, that I can't anticipate, because when you put an RFP out, that's when people tell you what they're willing to pay for that water or those rights, so I, I don't know, I can't quite quantify what that would be.
But potential lost revenue to the town is that if Cordelia doesn't have enough water, there's a financial impact to that town. If there's a proposed, you know, business maybe coming into the pit and all of a sudden they realize, ugh, we don't have any water.
Is Cordelia's still a possibility that they would use the water even if they don't go through Stevens? They would do direct, directly from the town?
It's a little-
Cause I didn't hear that.
So what I heard was, and this is a little bit of, oh, one that I don't have a ton of information on, because obviously, you know, Tim's in a bit of a situation where he's recused himself because he's on the planning board, which I respect and is the appropriate thing to do. My understanding is, for the farm to continue long-term, there is a need for water. So however that is, and they've done test wells in the area, the cost to put something in is far greater than using the existing well. So you're talking about a significant strain on a local business that needs this water down the line.
Then why don't you make that your number one item? How, how can you, as a resident, longtime resident, short-term resident, not support growth from a local farm?
Is that okay to mention, should you check with Tim?
Yeah, I, I need to have a conversation.
Yeah, cause I wanna make sure that we're not just like blown in the wind or anything.
And I don't, I don't wanna fear monger, we don't do this, but I wanna have fact strength.
But water is a-
Precious commodity.
E- exactly, and I think that, given the fact that you've got multiple businesses in that area that may be able to make use of it, at least I know of two that definitely want to make use of it.
Right.
Um, I just see it sitting there going to waste or maybe, you know, supplying five houses that we might build down the line, maybe as cottage housing, seems like a real waste of the water, I, I, and, and a waste of an asset.
To ask Tim was, was he considering using those wells for the cottage housing, because I'm not sure he was.
Yes, that's the way that this is actually set up.
Okay.
And, and that's, this is, I, I put a little-
Make sure, cause maybe he wasn't at one time and now he is.
Yeah, and I did have a conversation with Carolyn from a planning board perspective and Tim at one point about what they were talking about for that cottage housing.
Yeah.
And they made it very clear that while they don't think the town should be a public water supply, some of that water needs to be retained for that future potential of the houses.
Good, good, good to know.
So, I, and, and I don't disagree. I mean, if you're gonna give up an asset and you're not sure that what you're gonna do with the property long-term, it makes sense to retain a portion of that asset.
Well, write it up, I mean, we'll meet.
That's good, that's good, uh, advice.
It's, it's complicated.
Still agree though, at this point, that the eighteenth would be good for-
Yeah, if that's their meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll confirm with Carolyn as well.
On the sixteenth for an item, if Kristen, you could fine tune your letter to them or at least share with us and so if there are any last minute things to change or add, then we can be prepared on the sixteenth for that Wednesday's meeting.
I did drop the draft in the, in the board folder for tonight, so please feel free to take a look at it.
Before.
No, I worked on it all day today.
Okay.
So please feel free to, you know, give me comments.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, alright, so next up, uh, so much for me zipping through the meeting. Uh, discuss potential December ninth special town meeting articles.
Oh, I'll try to zip through this if you want, I, I was actually surprised.
Not too bad.
Yeah, when I sat down to do the list, there are, um, a significant number. The, the most important, as I mentioned before, was appropriating those public safety mitigation funds from Highland Commons to the second floor project, which we would have done at Maytown Meeting, but they came in at like the end of April, so we, we weren't able to do that. Also, in order to use those adder funds that we just talked about, um, they're in an energy stabilization account right now. They need to go to a special article to enable us to use them for the energy services. Um, we also do need to do a couple of FY twenty-five budget transfers. The animal control officer intergovernmental thing fell through. Um, so the ACO has agreed to continue to provide services independently to the town of Berlin, but right now that money is tied up in an intergovernmental line item and it needs to go back into the police department salary and expense line item.
Can, I, I didn't know anything about the, um, what, what is the school's free cash got to do with this?
So this is a separate one, this is, do you remember the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in free cash that was brokered at the last minute before the school special town meeting in June? That we added to make the deal work?
In the hot cafeteria?
In the hot cafeteria.
Well, the only thing is I don't remember that number, but that doesn't mean anything.
So I believe, and I'll double check.
Was that the last?
That was the last piece and the last give. Um, so I was running around trying to make sure we didn't have to shut the meeting down from a overcapacity and public safety perspective. So, uh, what I understand was on the FinCom that, that there was discussion about moving that money to raise and appropriate and revoking the use of free cash, basically making a swap, so we didn't actually have to end up using free cash. Now, this may not be allowable and June and I were talking about this too. I need to get guidance from town council, Scott Schultz thought there was a method. This is a new one to me, honestly, I, I don't know, but, um, there was talk about-
Is it because we used free cash?
Yes, and because we didn't use mitigation money. So it's like a three-way swap.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we have time, um, for you to talk to council.
Yeah, we also, and this is important, um, we need to amend the Recreation Revolving Fund bylaw to include payroll as an eligible expense, because they're starting to do some seasonal programming and that is not listed, um, in, as an eligible expense right now in their revolving fund.
Okay.
Uh, another one we talked about, and I do, would need to confirm this with CPA, but I was asked to add this to my list at one point, um, to remove the defunct housing partnership member and add a member from the municipal affordable housing trust on the CPA. And because that was created by town meeting, the composition was, the co, town meeting would have to make that change.
Okay.
Um, anything else related to our fund fourth modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement that we just spoke to? Um, uh, perhaps potential well disposition, road acquisition amendment and transfer of the conservation restriction, et cetera. Um, Barry has provided me with an electronic voting bylaw that he has written, that he wants us to include. It's, it's sort of just housekeeping at this point to, basically our bylaws don't allow us to, don't specifically state that we can do electronic voting, so it's like a cleanup item.
Okay.
Prudent investing bylaw. Um, this would allow for diversified investment of town funds. It would allow the town to invest in very specific, safe companies like Apple or Amazon and be able to get a higher rate of return on our investments. And those companies are very specifically laid out, like companies that aren't going under anytime in the near future. Um, and this was actually recommended by one of our financial advisors over at Bartholomew and, um, it's a new thing to help cities and towns basically take advantage of the high interest rates, uh, on the market.
Bartholomew?
Bartholomew is handling our trust funds right now and helping us invest them and make some additional revenue on our trusts.
Okay.
So, they, they were the ones that recommended, um, that we move forward with that. Um, this one, I don't remember exactly where this came from, but somebody at some point told me that we should put down adopting chapter forty, section fifteen A, which is to change the transfer of property from a two-thirds vote to a simple majority vote. And I don't even know if that rings a bell with you, but I had it on my thing, so I gotta look into that.
Um, personal property, because honestly, why would you care?
No, town-owned property.
Transfer of town-owned property vote.
I gotta look into that, but it was there, so I kept it on the list.
We may wanna, you said it, if we're talking about your municipal business.
It is, and it's municipal property, it's not private property.
Yeah. So find out where they came from.
Over private property, so I, I'm gonna look into that a little more. Um, and then the last one is, um, we need to revoke the town meeting vote for the opioid stabilization fund and create a special revenue fund for this, when the state initially came out with guidance or lack thereof. Um, initially when the opioid money started coming through, that's where it made the most sense to put the money and now they've advised us that it should go into a special revenue account.
Okay.
So nothing crazy, but, there's, there's ten of them at least.
Like, I wanted you to explain three B, six and ten, which, but.
Well, it's, it's curious, because if you look at section fifteen A, it talks about the city council, the city council of the city by a two-thirds vote of all its members, so.
Which would be the Select Board in a town, yeah.
Correct, so, but if this one is saying two-thirds, then we wanna override it, is that what that's saying? Cause if you click on that link, it specifically talks about two-thirds.
Have to look, adopt, adopting MGL chapter forty, sex, section fifteen A, did you, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Oh.
Transfer of land procedure. So, I'm kinda curious, at any time after the receipt of such notice, the city council of the city by, uh, by a two-thirds vote of all its members.
It's the last paragraph. When land is being transferred for the purpose of constructing low and moderate income housing, the vote required of town meeting shall be a majority vote instead of a two-thirds vote. I'm wondering if this came from planning board, and I just forgot to note it on my little list.
On your sticky?
On my, on my stickies that go everywhere, so let me, let me follow up with Tim on that, sorry about that one.
So when would we be opening, um, the warrant? Because I'm sure that there's gonna be others that are gonna come screaming down the pike.
Um, so I will have a better idea of that at the next meeting, I need to confirm the date with the town clerk's office, but first I wanted to give you a sense of what could slash should go on there to con, confirm with you that we really, really should have at least a short special town meeting.
Alright, alright, more to come on that, uh, definitely, there's plenty of time. Alright, next up, uh, consideration of a special event application to use the gazebo at South Commons to host a child's birthday party on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll turn that over to Dee.
Sure, so there's going to be, um, they're asking to hold a birthday party for nine-year-olds, so have a few tables set up with food. They'd like to use a soccer field and I directed them to the Recreation Commission for that approval. Um, they'll clean up, they're not hanging any decorations on the common, on the gazebo, they're not gonna put any nails or holes in. Um, and basically that's it, they're just asking to use it, they are not residents.
They are not residents of Berlin?
No.
Oh.
Any, uh, police needed, fire needed, anything?
Okay. It, it, it's, it's, it's sort of an odd ask.
Yeah, but it's pretty-
In my opinion, sure, it's, it is. I know that when we talked about our, um, building use policy at the school and we said, no, we're not gonna have birthday parties here at the school. Um, I mean, this is different. Um, but I'm trying to remember what the reasons were.
And I don't think, there's nothing in our current special event application that forbids those. Not to say we couldn't revise it in the future and look at banning that as a eligible activity, if it doesn't seem to be something that the board wants to do or it doesn't work out well.
It's just, I guess the question is, is it opening a can of worms? But, I mean, at this point in time, I mean.
It's from a, it's from twelve to four and there's gonna be forty-five percent chance of rain.
You could have a like twenty, eleven-year-olds wanting to come next year to have a party.
Well, so then you know what, so then we use that, so then we use that time to talk about, uh, you know, cause unfortunately if they damage it, you know, there's nothing here that says.
Well, there's not much to damage, is there?
No, but I'm just saying, so, I mean, in terms of liability, you know, little Bobby runs up and falls down in the gazebo and splits his-
It's town property.
Right, it is town property, I suppose you've got taxpayers paying for the items at, I mean, I, what is your feeling on this or?
Well, and the last time I was in, we let people use the gazebo all the time, but it wasn't approval by the board.
It was an approval.
Yes, and once you allow the public to use the gazebo, you can't deny any, any.
Right.
So, we don't have a policy.
Well, that's just it.
We can put a policy into effect.
Okay.
You know, we can write a policy and, and make sure we s, we s-
And then once the policy is in effect, then it's, it's a way of saying, I'm sorry, we're not gonna continue, that kind of thing. I mean, and it's, it, it deserves discussion.
This was a very late, um, request, this is Thursday at five after five.
Five days from now.
Well, I guess the invitations have all gone out then.
I guess I got one, so, I mean.
So, I mean, I, for this, at this point in time, I will make a motion to approve or to, for us to approve.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, the use of the gazebo at South Common to host a child's birthday party on August thirty-first.
I will second it, uh, sounds like we've got some additional work to do beyond that, but those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have a happy party, happy birthday little person who's gonna have a party there. And then, um, our last item, uh, on our new business is consideration of a one-day special pouring license submitted by John Muldoon of Clover Road to be utilized at the Berlin Orchard every Saturday and Sunday in September and October twenty-four. They were there last year.
Yes, they were.
So moved.
No issues, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, happy pouring, here.
Know if they're having, still giving, selling peaches?
Oh, their pe, their peaches started last week, uh, apples.
What's that?
They had a sign up about the peaches.
Yeah, but I didn't see the sign today when I drove by, that's why I'm wondering if it's still going on.
Oh, yeah, they started selling peaches last week, they started selling apples this week, they're selling cider donuts, I've already consumed two bags and,
And you didn't save me one?
No, not all at once, and, um, they will be doing, uh, Sheila will be starting to make the apple crisp on Saturday, so.
So the, so the- So the, so the, long story short, the peaches are still there.
Yeah, peaches are still there. Go on down, grab some apples.
Drove over the sign, I don't know, but I did see it last week.
It was up this week. It was up today when I drove to the Market Basket. I saw it, yeah.
I didn't, I drove by there too. I didn't see it.
No peaches for you, apparently, Chris.
They took it down when I went by.
They're up and running, um, so, all right, so down to board questions, liaison updates. Go ahead.
Um, I don't have anything right now. I'm sorry.
All right, um, I got two. Concom, um, Maplewood, already talked about that, not gonna beat that horse anymore. Um, Highland Bridge, um, maybe potentially moving back to an enforcement order. Um, because, well, there's some stuff that's not going on that they should be doing, so I think they're going to.
Oh, this is conservation?
Yep, conservation, they are going to email, uh, the people telling them that per their last agreement, they should have, insert work here. If they fail to, uh, the enforcement order goes back on, so.
So they didn't comply with certain provisions of their last agreement? Is that, okay, all right.
You are correct.
Got it.
Uh, CSX over on Forty Ca- near Forty Caves. If anyone likes really pretty colors, go down and take a look at the stream. Why Peg? Well, a bunch of railroad ties fell in the stream. So, they're the ones that are like newly, whatever that stuff is in them.
Yeah.
So the water's really pretty. Um, so they are working. Hmm?
What color?
Blues and purples and reds. They had a picture of it. It was disgusting and it was very sad, but yeah, several.
Those are, I mean, we were told to, when we bought our house about forty years ago, we were told to take the railroad ties out from around our driveway.
Yeah, yeah, so a bunch of.
Only just took some out because they were rotted, but.
So, yeah, so a bunch of, uh, railroad ties fell into the brook, um, close to the derailment site. They've got an enforcement order in place to immediately get there and clean them up.
That could be an issue for water. I mean, water for the wells, the people surrounding that you have.
So I'm sure they're down there putting in wattles and, and all other fun stuff to try and stop it. But that was last week that they were, they had noticed the pretty water in the brook from the railroad ties.
Allen Road.
Yep, yeah, from the last derailment. Um, boom, chakalaka, um, I got a draft of a letter today. So over on Beaver Brook, there was a bridge that was damaged, cause well, a tree fell on it. Mother Nature pulled my beer, fell on the, uh, fell on the bridge, broke the bridge. Uh, Conservation went to Lowe's up at Highland Commons and Lowe's greatly, uh, donated wood for them to build a bridge. So, uh, they're gonna put a letter of thanks together for Lowe's. Um, I've already reached out to Jan at the item. She'll post it too, so a little good neighborly stuff for the town, um, you know, that they're working on the trails. And thank you to Lowe's for the donation of their wood. Um, la la la, REC, uh, so the conversation that you had walked in on, Kristen, um, Chris, was that they finally decided where to put the pavilion.
That I walked in on where, when?
The, when Kristen and I were chatting about, oh, it's not there, it's, you know, stuff is out of date. Um, so they finally decided to put the pavilion parallel, I believe, parallel to the driveway. So it kinda sorta looks at the playground, so that if you've got little ones, you can kinda watch them, but then you can also turn and see everybody else playing on the field. They were going to go ahead and order it. There's about a twelve to fourteen week period that they thought that they would have it, but as we found out, we don't have an up-to-date invoice and paperwork, so I reached out to the head of, uh, REC and it has not been ordered yet, so avoided for now.
I reached out to the company regarding an updated contract as well.
And I let her know, so probably between the both of us, we can get that going.
And that's cause it got put on hold for a year because we changed the location at this last town meeting.
Yep. Uh, they're also talking about a master plan down for that area. Um, they're gonna go to CPA and get the money for that because, well, it's kind of expensive. Um, to do that, just so that they can have an idea of what will go down there, where will go down there. Do you need to take the ball field that's up at the beginning of the road and put it down next to the bigger ball field down there? And then what would you do with it? And how is that gonna work as they come in to do all the, um, um, underneath watering for the lawn and stuff like that? So there's a lot of moving pieces that they wanna start at the top level and see how everything works together. Um, their summer programs, they were extremely grateful for the fifteen hundred seed money from CPA. Um, summer programs were extremely successful. Uh, they learned a lot on what they need to do next year. Uh, they said that there's a big, they wanted to pass along a big shout out to Kathy, our treasurer, wherever you are, camera. So Kathy, our treasurer, I guess she helped them very much with, uh, finding a bank for the REC, for the program that they're using. So, um, thank you Kathy for everything that you've done. Um, so, yeah, so the summer program, all good, master plan, giant chunk of money, but they'll go to CPA for that. And by giant chunk of money, I mean about twenty-four grand, uh, ordering the pavilion. And that was it. Ba-dum-boom. All right.
That's not bad for a big agenda.
Yeah, that's cause Fred was late. All right, um, I love Fred. I'll see him tomorrow morning. Any other items?
Uh, no. Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Sure, you got anything down there?
No, ma'am.
All right, yes, I would, please.
Motion to adjourn. You have to second it, though.
Oh, all right, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Max. Uh, see you in a couple of weeks.